All right, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening and welcome to our City Commission meeting tonight. As you can see, we are dividing and conquering on this blistery evening, and so part of us are here in the Commission chambers and part are online. So bear with us as we work through our agenda tonight. Al, roll call.
Benson.
Benson here.
Brunig. Here. Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Present.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Present.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right. Number two under routine business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 10th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Weber, second.
We have a motion and several seconds. All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining. All right, minutes approved. Number three is a schedule of the bills. What is your pleasure?
Move that we pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public want to comment on bills? All right, Al, roll call.
Brunig. Aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four is City Manager's report, so I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Mayor Moser. Are you able to hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and media and public present. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And we are doing our best to do that, although like every other place, our organization has been impacted here a little bit, not only by the new variant, but also with seasonal illness and planned absences. So we have been able to take care of all services, although we've had to be a little creative. We've been able to take care of everything so far. Should service be disrupted in some way or changed dramatically in some way, we'll certainly communicate with you all. But we have a few people out from each department really, but we are grateful that we have folks who are always willing to step up when we need it. So we're looking forward to this, not riding this wave, I guess, so to speak. Also, thank you for the cancellation of the strategic planning work session tonight. That's really a conversation I want to have in person with you and with the department heads and the public. So when we feel better, more confident about doing so, we'll get that back on the schedule. There is a change actually in the agenda. The last item of business is incorrect. It's not a stop sign request. It's a no parking request. So you'll see that in your packet. I'm sure you read that in your packet. It's not the packet that's wrong. It's the agenda. So just if you'll take note of that. Also, I want to talk a little bit about the election already. Finance has begun preparations for our 2022 municipal election. That's going to be Tuesday, April 12th. Notice of vacancies for the election. One has been published already and one will be published tomorrow. Friday, January 28th is the first day that folks that are interested can circulate the nominating petitions. And the Commissioners whose terms are expiring in May are Schramm, Minor, and Weber. So anyone who is interested in running for a seat on the Commission has to be a resident of the City of Yankton and be a registered voter within the city. You can pick up your petitions at the Finance Office here at City Hall, 416 Walnut, or they're available on the Secretary of State's website. And the deadline for filing those is Friday, February 25th at 5:00 p.m. So if you do pick up a petition and you visit with Al and his staff, they'll let you know, you know, answer questions you have and things about the election. But that's coming around the corner, and I know it'll be another interesting election season because we're not probably able to campaign. Folks aren't able to campaign and do things as you might typically, but we'll be ready for that when it occurs. I don't have anything else to visit with you about unless you have questions for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for the City Manager?
Amy, this is Commissioner Mybaum. When we were going through strategic planning and then also I think about some conversations with staff before and stay interviews, things like that, the subject of, I guess essentially just getting the word out about our election came up in each and every one of those circumstances. So aside from the calendar that's included in the packet, what else is the city going to be doing this year different from years past, whether it's marketing, advertising, I don't know what, but what is it that we're going to be doing different to basically fulfill what we've heard now for a couple months when it comes to getting the word out about the opportunity to serve?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Mybaum. So of course, we have to stay and want to stay very politically neutral when it comes to the election. So as you stated, we're promoting the election and not the individuals. So folks that run, we know, we don't promote those people. We just promote getting the word out to vote and to register to vote. So we already have put things on our website relating to the election and election calendar. And Brad Bees is working on some social media posts. I believe he's got one already circulated for folks to make them more aware of the election. We had absentee voting available earlier than typically occurred at our last election. And, you know, because of the pandemic, that was a good idea. So we'll be talking with Finance Office about whether or not to reinstate that again. And of course, getting the word out there as well is important. Another thing, another tool that we can use and that I haven't used in the past is on Thursdays, I have a call with the local radio station and we have, they have now newsmakers. And so I think it's important to allocate, dedicate time to the newsmaking segment on the radio. A lot of folks locally listen to that. Also, equally important will be for us to talk about registering to vote because a lot of people are aware of the election, but not the fact that you do have to be registered before a certain time to be eligible to vote. Should the school district have an election as well, we'll be talking with them on ways to collaborate with our, with them to get the word out for joining the two elections together. So also happy to take any suggestions that the Commission has. We have the opportunity as well in our, in our new water billing system to put more information in people's utility bills. And I'm not sure whether or not people look at that extra stuff or if they throw away the extra stuff and take a look at just their bill. Some people don't get a bill, but a lot of us still get a paper bill and do look at those announcements. So that's something we have available to us as well when people maybe aren't going to the meetings and hearing us talking about it throughout this next couple months.
Any other questions? Okay, moving along. This is the time and place for anybody in the public who would like to make an appearance in front of the City Commission to please step forward. All right, we have no movement in the chamber, so we'll move on to the consent agendas items. Number one is to establish February 14th, 2022 as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special malt beverage on sale retailer's license for three days, which is August 19th through the 21st, 2022, from the Yankton Area Riverboats Days Incorporated, Melissa Wobin Treasurer for Riverside Park. Number two is to establish February 14th, 2022 as the date for the public hearing on a request for a special malt beverage on sale retailer's license for three days, August 19th through the 21st, 2022, from Yankton Area Riverboat Days Incorporated, Melissa Wobin Treasurer for the City Hall Auditorium. Number three is consideration of memorandum 22-16 recommending approval of the application from the Yankton County 4H for special events dance license for August 5th, 2022. And number four under the consent agenda is consideration of memorandum 22-17 recommending approval of the application from the County, Yankton County 4H for a transient merchant license from August 5th through the 6th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, say aye. Opposed, sorry, opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining?
Abstaining affiliation.
All right. Sorry, I have to get used to the online folks and give you a minute to respond, so I apologize there. I'll work on that.
And if I could interrupt just for a minute, since we have an abstention, we do have to call roll calls.
Okay. So then I would ask for roll call, Al.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Abstaining affiliation.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-04 and resolution 21-97, which is a public hearing and special assessment role for noxious vegetation and tree trimming. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 22-05 regarding the transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license for July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 from Arrowhead Holding LLC, Rick Doherty member, doing business as Gramps, to Yankton Convenience Incorporated, doing business as Total Stop Convenience Store, Jeff Nielsen, President, which is the location of 700 East 4th Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the Commission? Anybody in the public like to comment? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three under old business is consideration of memorandum 22-06 regarding the request for a special events retail on sale liquor license for one day, February 5th, 2022, from BPO Elks Lodge 994, Cindy Frank Secretary, which is at 504 West 27th Street for the NFAA at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-08 and resolution 22-04 regarding recommending an adjustment to the salary of the City Attorney in the amount of $66,473.83. This would be in line as accordance to the raises we gave City employees percentage-wise.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the Commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-07 and resolution 22-03 regarding recommending an adjustment to the salary of the Finance Officer to $117,260.93. This would be a salary adjustment to bring that salary up to be a more competitive pay in the range of what we're looking at other City Finance Officer positions within the state that might have comparable experience.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-09 and resolution 22-02 regarding recommending an adjustment to the salary of the City Manager to $134,569.98. This is in accordance to what we did with the other City employee positions at a percent raise plus step. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion?
I'll just take a moment to say how grateful I am to all three of our employees for the leadership they've shown this last year and just very thankful for everything they've done to get us through a very challenging time.
Any other Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries, and I would echo what Commissioner Johnson said. For those that aren't aware, we do, the Commission does the performance evaluations of these three City Employees, and we all feel very fortunate to have them on staff and working so hard for our community and for everything they've done this past year to keep things going. So thank you to the three of them and all they're doing, and I know will continue to do as we keep moving forward. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-02 and resolution 22-01 regarding a sidewalk cafe license, 102 and 104 East 3rd Street, which is Mojo's 3rd Street Pizza, and this is for a parklet. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this agenda item?
I believe Dave Mingo's on the go-to meeting, right?
Correct.
You outlined this in your memorandum, Dave, but no problems with this new kind of arrangement that we had last year?
So it is the same exact configuration as it was last year, proposed for this year also. There's a little bit of a learning curve with our staff down there in managing things, you know, that are occurring later in the evening with an occupancy like this on a sidewalk, but things went really well in general. And I think it's a great amenity for the community to have downtown, a good public-private partnership that I think turned out really well for everybody, not only in that block, but just in bringing people downtown.
Yeah, I thought it looked great last year, and I'm glad to hear there were no issues. So thank you for, thank you to our staff for supporting something that's new and different and takes some learning to make sure it works as it should.
And just a minute, too, I thought it looked very nice and almost a natural part of an extension to the downtown. All of that is done within specs approved by the City, correct, Dave?
Yeah, that's correct. This was a completely designed improvement, that parklet that went out into those parking stalls, because we have stormwater management issues that occur there also. We have railing requirements that need to meet code. We have step requirements as far as making sure that it lines up with the curb, so we don't have trip hazards. And also, we have liquor licensing requirements, which we've gone through and reviewed with the assistance of the City Attorney. And by this action, you're also declaring that part of the sidewalk, which allows us to effectually determine that this boardwalk area is defined as sidewalk during the life of the license or when the parklet is there, so meets all the legal requirements and all the building code requirements.
All right, thanks, Dave. Anybody else on the Commission for discussion?
Commissioner Minor here. I was interested to see how this would work last year, hearing how it was proposed, how it would be set up and then take down. It seemed like a nice addition to the downtown, and I would like to say, I know we have a couple of these permits tonight, and I appreciate hearing about them as we're once again going into the deep freeze. It gives me hope that summer is not that far away.
Good point.
Was that a motion?
For summer, or?
For summer.
We have a motion and eight seconds on bringing summer here for everybody. All right. Any other discussion on new business number four? All right, any community public discussion? Roll call.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-03 regarding a sidewalk cafe license for 100 East 3rd Street, also known as Boomers. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Johnson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number six under new business is an introduction and first reading of ordinance 1058, the first reading and establishing February 14th, 2022 as the date for the second reading and public hearing regarding the first supplement to the 2022 annual appropriation, ordinance 1055. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Thank you. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-11 regarding a bid award for the Fox Run Golf Course Vertical Turbine Variable Speed Prefabricated Pump Station, and this would be to Great Life Golf and Fitness in the amount of $183,588.1. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any Commission discussion on this?
I'd be curious if Todd is on the call, just to maybe talk through a little bit about how this bid process has played out.
Yeah, we've been made aware that the pump station was going to need to be replaced, and we have waited in time, again, knowing that we don't want it to fail because then we're going to be stuck. So we've put it off as long as we could. Great Life was working with Watertronics and knew what kind of equipment they wanted and those type of things. So we conferred with the agreement that we have and with the City Attorney, and it had to be bid out. It isn't something that Great Life could buy and do, and we pay them back. So we worked with Watertronics to get the specs for the equipment and wrote a bid to get construction contractors to bid on it, so that way we'd have something to compare if Great Life was going to bid on it, and they weren't sure that they were going to, since this isn't something they normally would do. They have installed these type of things on their other courses. They just don't bid projects as a contractor. So we wrote the specs and put out the bid. We had a couple people contact us other than Great Life, and we sent them the specs. They didn't have any questions for us, so we weren't sure what the situation was. They did not bid on it. One was a company out of Mitchell, and another was a local contractor that works with our water department on different projects. So they did take out specs, but they did not bid. Great Life put in the only bid, and that's where we are today.
Any other Commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunig.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-12 regarding an amendment to professional services agreement for the Westside Park Concept Plan with Stockwell Engineers. So this would be $164,750 additional to what has already been agreed upon. has already been agreed upon for a total of $197,000. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, could you, would you like to take on kind of walking us through what all this entails and why the additional amount?
Sure, I'm going to give a little bit of information and then let Todd and Adam talk to you a little bit about the details of the professional service agreement. So, the Westside Park project is still being planned. We have an elephant to eat here and we thought we could take a bigger bite this year than we probably are able to. That comes from a place of both cost and time and where we think we will be in terms of being able to secure contractor and secure the actual physical bridge, which is a purchased item. It comes prefabricated. That's important for this initial phase of work because it's something that our major donor of Avera would, has contributed to the project. So, that's part of this first phase. Also included in this phase is some shoring up of the island. So, if you take a close, if you don't just do a drive-by, if you ever take a close look at the duck pond area, you can see that the island itself is looking a little bit tired. So, that needs a little spruce up as well as the perimeters of the pond itself needs some TLC and so that would include some work there as well. We also want to provide the best environment we can, both aesthetically and for humans as well as for the wildlife that we have there. And so, there's a lot of sedimentation over the years that's occurred in that pond. So, we want to dredge that out, dig that out and get that a bit deeper, which will be better for the clarity of the water and all those types of things. We will be doing some work on the well also as part of the project that feeds the pond. That won't be in the specifications, but it will be something we also include in our work. We also want to do some significant trail work and improvements. Those will probably be done through different programs with the city. You know, when you dream, you dream big and then you have to take out your allowance and see what it is you have to do. And so, we have a lot more plans to come and we're working with other donors. So, in the future, we're currently working on a reflection area and meditation area with some features with a private donor. We're also talking about some pickleball improvements at Westside Park and we're talking with folks on that. So, there'll be probably, it'll probably be a phased project, the big project, but you'll see significant improvements with this phase. So, we need Stockwell's help, of course, again, and we already have a contract with Stockwell, but this contract expands our agreement with them to help us specify that work so we can advertise for bids and secure a contractor, we hope, as soon as possible to get some work done. I'll let Adam and Todd fill in any blanks that I left out. Also just want to tell the public, I told the commission on Friday, but I was concerned about the amount of open water the ducks and geese had there. That's typically something the Parks Department takes care of, but we're, you know, working together with staff and things like that. And we need a little more water in the pond too. So, Donnie Robinson was going to break up some ice for us and fill up the pond a little bit more. So, we have some fresh water there for the geese and ducks to groove around in. So, if I missed anything, Todd and Adam?
The well actually is starting to flow a little bit again. So, now it not only took through November and December, but almost all of January. But, we do have a little bit of water flow there and that helps. We have a bubbler in there to keep water moving. So, we have open water for the ducks and the geese, but when that flows, that also helps that situation. Because in the past, we never had to eat. When it was flowing really, really well, we never had to put a bubbler in. Another thing that'll be coming up with, in this park with the commission, the skateboard group had made a request way back in 2019. They were going to try to raise some funds, if the city would match funds in the amount of raising $10,000 if the city would match. And I've been contacted by one of the persons in that group and they think they've secured the $10,000. So, in the coming weeks and months, we'll probably bring in a sim forward to see if the commission would still be willing to match some money and make some improvements on skateboard equipment. Again, may not stay in that same exact location in that park, but we'll work through that as we work through the rest of the plan. So, yeah, a lot of good things going to happen in that park. But, the land water conservation fund grant that we received to put in new playground equipment, made the playground equipment order in November, knowing what's going on in the world and the ship date that came back on it is in late July. So, again, we're hoping that we see that. The Bourne Learning Trail Equipment that we ordered back in May, April, even maybe even before that, we didn't see until this month in January. So, again, we're nervous about stuff order and how long out it's going to be. But, again, as City Manager Leon said, we will work through things and phase things in and do the best we can in the time when things arrive after we've ordered them. So, Adam, I don't know if you have anything you'd want to add?
Thank you guys covered it.
We do also have Stockwell in the room. I don't know if anybody has questions for them.
This is Commissioner Mybaum. I don't want to speak for the rest of the commissioner, the commissioners who are at the September meeting. I got the distinct impression at that meeting that this was going to be an opportunity for us to see a detailed cost breakdown at this point in time of a lot of the features that we've been talking about. So, the deliverable that I see here in this agenda is pretty limited. It's a, it's one graphic rendering of a small area of the park, basically the pond. So, I don't know if other commissioners were expecting more at this point in time, but I know that was discussed at the September meeting. So, are there deliverables that are not included in this agenda packet that we could see?
We do have an estimated breakdown of the deliverables for the project.
And we can certainly share those with the commission and the public for that matter. I will say that some of the visuals we had initially and were initially enthusiastic about, they got too, too far out of our budget too quickly. So, we didn't include all the visuals Stockwell has put together for us because they're out of the realm of possibility of our budget that we thought we could ask for. So, we can share those. It just wouldn't be included in, in this phase of work.
Yeah, and I guess I just don't see anything different than what we were already well aware of in previous conversations. The estimate's the same. It's going to be 1.5 million. The difference being though, it looks to me like it's a much larger chunk of change that we're going to be paying upfront for the engineering specs. So, on top of the concept work that was done, I would actually say that the master plan work is more detailed and easier for me to sell to citizens than what I see in this agenda packet. But, I guess I don't feel like I learned anything in between our September meeting and seeing what I see in this agenda item here tonight.
So, the compensation or the, the concept plan allowed us to put a more detailed cost estimate together. And as the city manager stated, there was some things that we just simply couldn't afford. The budget wouldn't allow us to have in this project. That concept plan allowed us to determine what we could do with what we had budgeted. And overall, the amended amount is in line engineering-wise for the estimated cost of the project.
And so, the 1.5 million, that includes what is going to amount to about 200,000 worth of design work, the concept and the engineering work. Is that right?
Well, the project's actually at 1.4 million and yes, it includes the engineering work along with that.
Any other questions from the commission?
I would just add my two cents at this point then. When, when the master plan was put together in 2019, it was a very different landscape in a lot of different ways. A lot has changed in the last two years. This project itself, while I have no doubt if it were to be fulfilled to completion, is going to look beautiful. But, we do have a lot of other things that are going to be coming down the pipe here this year and even very soon. I just feel there's too many unknowns. We're not out of the pandemic yet. We've been hearing a lot about housing. You know, this is, this is a, it's a, it's a great feature of our city. It's a park that unfortunately, without a Mandarin duck, it's not a big revenue opportunity for us. It's, it's perhaps at this point in time, not the best way to spend our money. I do definitely think this is something we need to revisit and not let stagnate, like too many ponds without moving water could have happened. So, I guess I just don't feel good about potentially spending hundreds of thousands of dollars right now on the park. I do like the idea of matching funds. So, when we have entities come to us with 10,000, when they come to us with 200,000, that we can, you know, chip away at the opportunities to beautify this park. That's worthwhile in my opinion. But, over the course of the next even two years, 1.4 is a lot to bite off at this point in time. That's where my head is at. I just, I can't see myself supporting this, this agenda item in its entirety at this point because I just don't feel good about the, the possibility of spending a lot more in the next two years at this location in our city. I think there's other bigger opportunities, potentially for bigger returns that we could be looking at.
A lot of what was mentioned in our commission packet says it's going for the bidding and construction administration, basically looking at pond dredging, bank stabilization, obviously the, as you mentioned, the pedestrian, pedestrian bridge replacement, and then a pond viewing plaza. Now, a lot of that to me is telling me it's not as much cosmetic as it may be needed maintenance. Would that be a correct assessment? I mean, how long would we have if you're looking at a bank stabilization, pedestrian bridge, I know is probably getting on its last leg. Does it become a safety and, and needed, needed work?
The pedestrian bridge is not up to code. You know, if you're on a mobility device or something like that, it's not wide enough to, to utilize and it's not up to safety standards now, any, either. You know, it's got a lot of open areas where someone could slip through, I suppose. You know, I think structurally it's sound. Needed maintenance, I guess, is just maybe a matter of opinion. In these last few drier years, the more shallow the pond has become, the harder it is to keep the fountain going. I think it's just looking, I think it's looking like it needs some, an overhaul. It just needs to be redone. It's, it's looking, but I mean, safety-wise, the pond, a pond is never really going to be a safe, you know, area. It's a threat for, for everyone. Luckily, we haven't had any problems with safety and people in the pond. But, you know, safety-wise, yeah, you can ignore and leave it for as, you know, little or as long as you like. That's not what we recommend. You know, we wanted to leverage, as Commissioner Mybaum said, you know, leverage the, the donation with city funds and make some project happen there. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me to just do the bridge, for example. That's about what the contribution would, would pay for because the environment there is, to me, look, it's time, it's needed. We need to do an upgrade. But, but it's cosmetic primarily, so that's not untrue. Depends upon, you know, how the commission feels about that as a, you know, as a presentation to the community and, and taking care of the things we have is sort of our social infrastructure. That could be a little bit of stretch. It's not water sewer streets, but it's our social infrastructure.
Commissioner Miner jumping in here with a couple of quick questions. I have always thought that much of the money would end up being spent in ways that are unseen, that we need to shore up the banks, that we need to do some work dredging the pond. So, that doesn't particularly concern me. It's my understanding, and I think Mr. Mingo's still with us, isn't Westside Pond part of our flow with flood mitigation? Or am I completely mistaken in that understanding? And then, wouldn't we be making an investment in our infrastructure as well as taking care of cosmetic implications?
Westside Park is part of our western drainage basement, basin, and there is a pipe that goes from that pond down to the river. So, it is part of our stormwater management facility in the, in the western part of our community and in that basin.
So, from my perspective, my understanding has always been, I guess, I know we were hoping that we could afford more in our budget with some of the more visible things that we can see in the park. But, my understanding is that that, the upgrade of the park was to some degree cosmetic, but also an investment in our city's infrastructure. But, I've been...
City Manager Leon, you had mentioned that there were other entities who had expressed an interest in making some donations towards this project. I think that also was brought up in our September meeting that we have this concept design work done for 30 some thousand dollars, potentially to elicit some more interest in donating towards these features. So, has that been the case and can you talk about some more specific amounts? Because again, all I'm aware of specifically is 200,000 from Avera. I don't know if Avera has paid that yet, but that's all I'm aware of at this point.
We have received the contribution from Avera. We are in discussions with a private family who has not yet wanted to be public because we are still working through them with Stockwell on, on the concept of what they'd like to do in the park. That will be a significant contribution as well, but we don't have design costs tied to that concept yet because we're still pinning that down with that family. Those folks are Yankton people, but they don't live in state anymore. So, there's been some back and forth as well. We're also talking with another group of donors who, we have had some meetings scheduled, but because of the pandemic and the work that they do, they haven't been able to connect with us on a, on a meeting. However, I would expect that we will still hear from them regarding what they would like to contribute. It may be to this particular phase of the project or it may be something in addition. We're also talking... We're also talking with some other sports groups that are interested in utilizing the park in new ways for a contribution. And so Todd and I have just recently spoken about, you know, should we, you know, address some of these groups who have made some requests to us recently, and we have done that. I don't have commitments from them, and we're still in phases of just kind of discussing concepts. So I hate to talk about who they are publicly in case their groups don't bring that forward, but we are talking with them. And we do have some other improvements coming, cosmetic improvements. As Todd mentioned, we have the skate park people who have now have their allocation. You know, it is fair to say that this has not been, this is a priority project for us, but we haven't been able to dedicate as much time and attention as we would like to. At least, I haven't been able to because of really, you know, everything else going on and wondering, okay, who have we got working in what department, when, of late? But also, we knew these things would take times, and when we're working with donors too, and maybe there's some advice I could get from somebody with more expertise on fundraising, and I do have a meeting with Sheila Cook that actually with Avera, and I'm going to ask her this very question. How much do you push somebody when they're being the offerer? You know, I always feel like it's a real awkward situation for an entity who collects taxes, who takes money away from people and decides how to spend it, to determine how, you know, to push people or to ask people for more. So to me, like I think I said before, it's been a dance a little bit, and I'm always letting the other partner be the leader. Now, that may be something, an area of growth for me as I venture into more fundraising, private partnership-type things. But in speaking with Dive and Yankton, that was kind of how they led their campaign, is let, you know, let the offer come from the individual or entity. So if there is not a comfort level, I certainly understand with the commission, we could allocate a work session and go through some of the concepts that were talked about with Stockwell. What we're looking at then, in reality, is probably putting this on pause here for another year, but yeah, I have not, I have not spent as much time on this as I have making sure our, all of our other services are running and up to speed. But I do think this is a good project, and Stockwell has been a real good partner in paring back as we move forward and look at different concepts and say, well, what would this cost? What would that cost? And so we've had multiple meetings with Stockwell, both in person and remotely, so we feel comfortable with this phase, but if the commission doesn't, that's, of course, your purview.
What is the timeline for this? I was just trying to quickly look through my packet. I didn't see that timeline on that. So if we move forward, let's say this does go through today, what does that timeline look like? Because I don't, I don't think I see a date even in the Stockwell package.
It'll be pretty, this is Adam, it'll be a pretty tight timeline, design-wise, and Stockwell's aware of that. We've already had conversations about that. They've already been in contact with one of the bridge suppliers. Lead time on a bridge is 12 weeks, and with shop drawings at three weeks, that puts it at 15 weeks. And that's just to get it delivered, so it's a pretty tight timeline.
And with that in mind, I would definitely appreciate just everybody having the opportunity to pause on this for a couple months, to at least take us right up until when we get settled in for budget season for next year. So essentially, you know, City Manager Leon, you could be walking through the park during the summer days with potential donors if that opportunity presents itself. Staff itself can continue to take deeper breaths at this point in time, given everything else that's going on. I would think that since we have this concept design here with us today, that if we pause for a few months and then resume with Stockwell's on this, you know, later this year, that we can then put this all into our budget for 2023. It seems to make sense to me, again, I'm just kind of reading not just the room necessarily, but city staff and the community as a whole, I guess. That's where I'm at. I would feel better if we pause this temporarily, that we resume perhaps at a better time when I think folks will be able to slow down a little bit and not feel so rushed, because I would like to have a new bridge there that's safe, that is attractive, that is a draw for our community. And it'd be tough to say that there's the possibility, we wouldn't even have that yet this year, so instead, we'd be planning for a bridge to be there prior to the busier time of the year, which would be spring of next year, I suppose. So again, that's where my head is at.
That's certainly manageable, if that's the way the commission would choose to go. I do want to remind the commission, we haven't, we haven't signed any agreement with Avera. However, the contribution was made for an improvement to the park to help celebrate their sesquicentennial, I believe, Avera Sacred Heart Sesquicentennial, and maybe, Nathan, you can help me with that, but that is, celebration is slated for November 2022. So in working with the donor, you know, and I'm just speaking generically because Avera has been working with Cara Pyer primarily on this, and she, you know, she's just wonderful and understanding about everything. You know, the, they contributed the funds and with the hopes of having this in place by November for their celebration and to signify the importance of that in our community and to them. Don't know how they'll feel if the commission should choose to pause on it. There is a possibility we could go forward tonight and it's still not get done with the way the world is, but that is kind of why we pedaled our little duck feet faster underneath us than we would like to have, we would like to usually be comfortable with. But again, in this environment, we're not always as comfortable as we want to be, but so there's that element too, and I don't bring that forward to be contradictory, Commissioner Mybomb, just so everyone knows the dynamics there. But again, we don't have an agreement signed, but that was a discussion that, you know, that significance of that celebration would take place then sometime in November.
Any other discussion from the city commission?
I do. City Manager Leon, this is Commissioner Villanueva. If this phase of the project is to go forward, I do think that it is still possible that we could still pursue some donors. Would anything change, and maybe this is a question for Adam or Stockwell, but would anything change in this phase? Let's say there was a donor to come forward, would anything, would be missing anything in this phase, or would this phase still happen and then still potentially pursue donors in phase two or three?
Yeah, I guess anything could be added at any time if the money is there. That's...
Right, but I guess maybe I should clarify. So nothing would change, this phase is still going to happen whether we get 100,000, 150,000 donation from somebody else, but this phase still needs to happen. It's still the groundwork to move forward.
Well, we think so. You know, anything else in the park and the things even that have been done in the park, I think, probably don't have as much meaning, or we shouldn't do a lot more cosmetically in the park if we're not going to take care of this, this item, is where we're coming from. Now, one of our donors that's connected with Avera, you know, their funds, maybe they might want to have their name on something within that park, or, excuse me, within this phase. So perhaps if they come forward, they'll want to put their name on the viewing area, which is right, kind of as you can see in the schematic, right in front of the current park shelter, or maybe the island, or something like that. And then that would free up, I don't want to say free up more money, but that might offset some money, and maybe the commission would decide to take something further or allocate it towards something else in the park. And that is, you know, with the understanding bids come in, where we'd like to see them as well. But yeah, there's possibility that that offsets some, and I'm continuing to, we'll continue to talk to new folks as well, you know, also being cognizant of the fact that we have soccer, the soccer group raising funds and other big projects going on as well. But yeah, the folks that have come to us so far have not been initiated by the city, but Todd and I have been initiating discussions for smaller parts of the project with sports groups, et cetera.
So just follow-up question for Adam. So Adam, being the Public's Work Director, for people that, I'm assuming if you're watching this, you realize that all of our, all of our meeting packets and agendas are online for everyone to see. So you, you were the one that brought this forward and signed the document that says that we should move forward with this. I'm just, I'm asking as a Public Works Director and City Manager Leon, I mean, obviously, you've both agree with this, and I just, in your best judgment, that we should move forward with this, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the commission? Anybody in the public like to address the commission on this agenda item? All right, I will remind commissioners, the motion and second on this agenda item is to approve the additional $164,750 to Stockwell Engineers for a total amount of $197,000 to be able to finalize the design plan documents, bidding, and construction administration. So the motion on the floor right now is to approve that. Al, roll call.
Minor.
Minor, aye.
I apologize. Minor was a yea. Aye, okay. Shram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybomb?
No.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number nine under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 22-13 regarding a final payment acceptance and payment for concrete crushing. That final payment is $8,460.39 to CRC Sand and Gravel LLC. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Shram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10 under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 22-14 regarding a final payment acceptance and closeout of Ridgeway Development Project. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shram?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries, especially when you turn your mic on. Yeah, all right. Number 11 under New Businesses, as duly noted during the City Manager's report, is actually a no parking request, which is consideration of memorandum 22-15 and resolution 22-05 regarding a no parking request on Green Street, which is in coordination with Aztec Industries. What is your pleasure?
So moved, Johnson.
Minor, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? I guess, Adam, I think this memo was coming from you, and in driving down that street tonight, or the street today, going to work, I did see a few vehicles parked along that road. So if approved tonight, how is that going to be notified? Are people already notified? And potentially, maybe, I was looking at the map, they were parked in an area they could have been, but I know it was in front of the apartment complex. And then I also notated in front of Aztec, there is a curb cutaway in front of that fence line. Is that part of the no parking? And if it is, how will that be notated?
This is approved. We'll get the proper signage up at each of those locations indicated in the map. I guess, could you clarify which curb cut you're referring to again?
I did notice it was on the west side in front of Aztec. I'm looking at the map right now, and it's right along their fence line on Green Street, and it's a curb cutaway, but I wonder if one time it wasn't an entry into the building, and now it's been changed, but there's not a full curb there, and it's up to a fence. So I'm guessing if that would be in an area, it would be a signage, and that's how it would be marked? Or do we also do, like, yellow on the curb, or something like that?
Well, it depends. We can do both. We can do signs and yellow paint. Sometimes just signs are appropriate, but we'll make sure it's properly marked so that any of the parking public knows where they can and can't be.
Adam, Mayor Moser was also asking about notifying the tenants there. Can you talk about the notifications that happened, if anything? I guess I'd also be curious to know if the apartments themselves are at capacity? I would assume so. If, I'm sorry, if there's no vacancy, that they are fully filled at this point?
So we've, the engineering staff's been watching this area, and we have not noticed an abundance of on-street parking. There's one or two that are typically there, and they're not in the areas that are identified as proposed no parking, so we don't feel it should be an issue. We can put up notifications in the apartment complexes. We usually don't do that. Aztec has informed us that they didn't, they, I think they've talked to folks too, that it wasn't going to be an issue, so.
What's it, what's it going to end up costing us to put up this signage? I'm going to, I'm going to guess it's 16 to 20 different signs?
I don't have that estimate right offhand. I can get that for you if you'd like, but yeah, it'll take some signs and posts.
I wonder if Aztec would be interested in cost-sharing opportunity, given it was their request that initiated this agenda item?
Typically, we haven't asked for that in the past, but I can sure talk to the city manager about that.
And I don't know about the apartment capacity. I don't know, I don't think any of us would have any idea of that, and just we would assume it's full because of the housing issues we have in our community. assume it's full because of housing issues we have in our community. But we wouldn't have that information.
Yeah, I do believe that vehicles I've seen parked on there are probably more of convenience because they probably live on the units closer to the street than the parking lot itself. Because I do believe in your memo, you did indicate that there is ample parking spots available in that area, correct?
That is correct. And there's still quite a bit of on-street parking available. But we did, we actually pared down what Aztec was initially requesting, and so that there would be on-street parking available there. We worked with them so that to determine where where the problems were with them and their their longer loads coming in and out of their facilities. And this is the plan that the engineering department came up with. So.
And I won't speak for Chief Foot, but my understanding has been when we make a change, a traffic change, stop sign, no parking, things of that nature. Once that's approved, they talk to the officers about the about the implementation date, because there's time here period where after you approve it, before it will actually go into effect. And upon it going into effect, they, you know, take a more of an education approach initially, since it is new. I'm not saying somebody would not get a ticket. But typically, the patrol has been, you know, using that time period, much like community development does with nuisances and things, an education approach first before there is a ticket or negative repercussion. Is that fair to say, Chief?
Yes, that would be correct. We like to educate, just like we did for our doing currently with the Panayna Speed Zone change.
All right. Any other discussion from the commission?
Sounds like it's appropriate. I have no issue with the item as it is. I would be curious to know, once some costs are put together, whether or not Aztec would like to provide an answer of either yes or no as to a cost sharing opportunity. Again, can't hurt to ask if they're interested, great. And if not, no worries. But it would be something that I would be interested in in finding out. And perhaps it could open doors in the future for other opportunities like this as they come along.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Villanueva. I have one more question. I have noticed sometimes when I've driven down Green Street that there are those large semi trucks that that will park along that area to either wait, I'm assuming just wait to offload or get into their plant. Now, if these are no parking zones, will they be, will they be parking in those those areas to then wait to enter? Or are they, are we simply clearing these so they actually have a way to just pull in without having to wait on the street?
It's my understanding that this is for access, ingress and egress out, not staging areas or anything like that.
Thank you.
I'll just add on paying for the cost of the signage. I would want city staff to really have a discussion around that to make sure there's consistency, if we're going to start asking private entities to pay for public signage. I understand that they're the ones that requested this. But if that's a road we're going to go down, let's just make sure that it's well thought out. And I can't say that I am really interested in going down that road, is what I would say.
All right. Any other discussion? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shram?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. I do have, hopefully can go off script just briefly to ask Chief Foot, how are things going on, the new speed change along Panayna and out by the airport?
Everything that I have seen has been good. We've had a few traffic stops that they've made just to remind people to slow down. But it's still educational right now. People do still struggle once in a while, but it's going good.
No worries. I've stayed off of it. So I'm teasing. All right. We do not have any other business in front of the commission tonight, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And anybody abstaining? Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.